At this time, I'll call the September 24th, 2020 meeting to order for the Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda, we have four items that we're going to add to the agenda.
Let me ask you, Sis Lynn, we talked about earlier, do we need to go into executive session to discuss the emails we got or not? I mean, we don't have to, it's probably how we want to respond to them or...
Oh, no, I don't think we need to.
Okay, okay.
Okay, and I'll make mention of the emails too. So, we do have a resolution that we need to consider regarding the Sparks funding would be the first item. The second item that we're going to add is the belly dump truck. And also, the third item is investigative equipment through diversion money. The fourth item, the fourth item is for a vehicle for the Sheriff's Department. And I'd move that we add those four things and approve the amended agenda.
I'll second that.
We have the motion and the second, is there any other discussion or question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the September 17th meeting and also fund expenditures of $102,940.21.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda, any discussion or question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'm sorry.
Motion carries.
I failed to put on there the minutes of your special meeting for September 18th under the consent agenda.
Okay.
So, those need to be considered for approval also, I'm sorry.
So, that is the Friday?
September 18th.
September 18th.
Minutes.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, I will make a separate motion that we approve the minutes of the September 18th special meeting we had on Friday.
I'll second that.
We have the motion and the second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Commission comments, Craig?
Nothing.
Ron?
I just want to make a comment to our EMS people and folks that work for the county. Having personally had to call on, calling folks for help this week, I think we've got some professionals and I'm very proud to see the services and things they conduct to the public. You know, many times we wonder what these guys do and you don't see and hear from them until you get into a situation where it's bad. And I'm sure awful appreciative that we have the services we do, thanks.
Okay, I had a meeting this past week, Central Kansas Mental Health Board, I'm on that particular board. And of course, they also discussed some of the situation because they do a lot of counseling and with some of the restrictions and issues with COVID, it's, it's made things a little bit more challenging because they work with the schools and there's just a lot of things going on. And so, anyway, we had that board meeting earlier today. We also heard from the Sheriff's Department and was in here. And then, right before our meeting, we did have some people that, individuals that were in here to ask about some of the masking issues and relating to if we had that on the agenda. We do have a printed agenda, so, you know, if we do have that or any other issue come up, it is published where people would have opportunity to see it. And we certainly welcome those questions. We did receive some letters too, or emails, and so, I'll cover that on the notices and communications. Were there any other comments that anyone would want to make on the Commission? Hearing none, we'll move on, there are no petitions, there's no proclamations, but there is opportunity now. If anyone would want to make public comments, you can do that on any issue or item that's not on the agenda. And you don't only need to step up to the podium and state your name and address and what your concern or question or opinion happen to be. Since there are no public comments, we'll go on to our reports of county officers, our county administrator Brad Homming.
Okay, we'll start with the jail meeting Monday, we had a two-week jail meeting Monday, not a lot to report other than we have the Torquay work session, Masons are supposed to start lingering in next week and hopefully they'll get going again with the full crew to be here in two weeks and that will hopefully get us back on track. Everything else seems to be going well, the fire sprinkler people are working out there, the electricians are pulling wire. And we did get a painter on the job finally, they started on Tuesday inside the jail area, so, things are progressing and Tom's done an excellent job of keeping things going as best he could on these projects that he can keep people working on. So, hopefully, by this time, two weeks from now, I have much better news to report and we'll have some walls going up out there in the Woking area, so. We did, Derek, did get a free landfill week scheduled for October 19th to the 23rd. And that's, is kind of a work in progress, a conjunction work, you know, they have to work in conjunction with Barton's guys as well as getting four to six guys from Highway Department to help out there and just sort of get people in and out because of the work load that comes in. But Barton's got guys free that week, so, we are publicizing that and get that going. The Fairrook Bridge construction, as I mentioned earlier, we ran into a butt let from a, apparently there was a 120-foot bridge there before. The one that we just took out was years ago. And I don't know how many bridges have been there over the years, you know, over the centuries, but they are drilling and driving, piling, and the things are moving along rather well. The last situation obviously is the COVID situation, as I kept you guys abreast this week, it's certainly not looking any better than it has in the past. We've had a couple clusters designated and on Tuesday, due to the sheer volume of contact tracing tests that were being required, we declared community spread. The girls, well, it's not just girls, guys and girls, all of us have been working, you know, the last two, three weeks non-stop, weekends and evenings. I know those girls are working from home doing their contact tracing until, you know, it's no longer appropriate to call at nine or 10 o'clock at night. They were just overwhelmed and I think at this point, we've released that to the state. There's not as much contact tracing occurring just because it's, it's to the point where you can, you can easily assume that everybody should be cautious and concerned, so. As you're aware, I'm sure that Dabbling School shut down for two weeks because of the numbers they had. Chapman is now shut down for two weeks, the other three districts in the county are still looking pretty good. I think it's safe to say it's a matter of time, but well, people, fingers crossed, so.
Chapman's not shut down completely.
Well, yeah, I think, what, high school and
Middle school.
Little school, yeah, yeah, they were still keeping the other attendance centers going here, Greg, so. And that's one reason that some of the plans that we had worked with them on originally dealt with the cohort groups and attendance centers because we didn't want to, we didn't want to see them being forced into shutting down the whole district when they've got multiple attendance centers, so. And apparently, it's working to some degree because Blue Ridge and Road Center and Enterprise and then the Chapman Elementary can always continue to operate, so. And I think, I don't know about Dabbling, I think Dabbling is somewhere, I don't know about their elementary.
I think they're all closed.
Are they all closed, okay. Well, I know yesterday, the, the numbers that were reported in our conference call with the school districts at 3:30 yesterday afternoon, Solomon had like five cases where they were either quarantined or positive, students and staff. Harrington had three or so, Hope only had a couple. If I remember correctly, Chapman had like 40 staff and kids quarantined. And Dabbling had, I remember Brandy said 187 in quarantine and then 30 or 40 that were positive, so, don't hold me to those numbers, but that's close. So, it's with a couple busloads and different, different events going on, Dabbling certainly saw spikes, so, hopefully they get that under control. You know, last week, prior to last week, we were seeing, you know, for, for months, one or two cases a day on average. Now, we're seeing over 15 cases a day in the last five days, so, it's jumped up considerably, so. Hopefully, people will continue to use caution and we can get a handle on it, but it's not looking very positive, so.
And I might make a comment there that, and I just would, I talked to a couple board members, it's not so much the, the students are there, but it's the staff that's, that's kind of decimated Chapman at the high school level and middle school.
Yeah, I think they had more staff members affected over positive than they did kids in Chapman, so. It doesn't seem to have any, it's not, it's not
Selective?
Yeah, it's not selective on who it picks and all you have to do is be around the right person for the right amount of time, unfortunately. And, you know, luckily, we've only had two deaths, I don't own reports one, we have had two deaths. The second one was a person who also resided here and, and I think Shawnee Mission, their driver's license said Shawnee Mission because it's, they have homes in both places, but they actually died here while they were staying here. And so, it went to Johnson County's record, but we have had two deaths here, so. Fortunately, no youth, no kids, we hope to keep it that way, so, doesn't mean they can't, so, but we hope to keep it that way.
Going back on the landfill week, and I know we'll get that information out, are there any materials they won't be able to take out there in general? Or will we have any guidelines, I mean, as far as tires and?
They don't, if I remember right, and I'll get that for you, but I don't believe they take tires and I don't think they take any hazardous materials. We will take household hazardous waste, we'd like to have it or household hazardous waste building, but pretty much everything else, I think they will take, we'll all find out.
Refrigeration will have to have a?
Well, we can do that, that goes over to the middle pile and then they have somebody come out and evacuate the refrigerators and stuff like that, so.
It doesn't have to be drained or freon?
No, no, we have somebody that comes out and does that, so. And then electronics and things, we can have a separate trailer that goes, so, you know.
This goes back when I worked with the Corps, you were the only landfill that would take refrigerators that didn't have it, you couldn't take them to Gary County.
Really?
Yeah, so, luckily, you guys got it.
Okay, Doug?
No, nothing, thank you.
Okay. I'll go to notices and communications, we have from Dickie Schmidt's office at the State, just wanting us to get in touch with the fire department, it was District?
Two.
Two, and just need some paperwork, follow-up on that and information. And so, they'll, we'll take care of that, have a housekeeping item. We also had something from the Eisenhower Foundation and just have an update on some of the things that they happen to be doing. We also had a Ingram's magazine out of Kansas City, which is just talking about things that are going on in Kansas City business-wise and then also our county news, newspaper that we received. Also, and Craig had made mention of that, I think all of us have probably received some phone calls and emails personally or text messages. And, and so, you know, we're here to, as far as what the public has information or questions, they can provide that or give that to us. We've mainly, the emails that we received from a few individuals had more to do with the masking and also the contact tracing and the methods that are used on that for the health department. And I think Brad covered that in some of his report, that because the numbers have spiked so much, that's been handled a little bit different. And I, you know, I do know, you know, in some other cases, not in our county, where, you know, it would be a phone call to an individual that would identify some other individuals and then call that information because, so, you know, it is something where it's kind of been in a, the way the numbers are, it may seem that you could just notify everybody or send letters out or, or something, but the practicality of getting that information out, you know, just isn't there to have that process. And I'm sure at some point, there'll be some review on, you know, is there a better method to get the information out? And from what I understand, I, I think the schools are a little bit overwhelmed too because they're faced with the same thing, doing some of the tracing and gathering that information. Now, did you want to mention the, Brad, on the, the testing sites and maybe put a little bit more emphasis on that?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's going to take place and?
Glad you mentioned that. Because of the sheer numbers, the hospital was only able to test around 40 people a day from one to three because of their restrictions on staffing, availability of staffing. We looked into, Dr. Holmes had contacted the State and looked into having the State bring in a mobile lab to do mass testing. They said they could do that, although they said a lot of things that they could do and realistically, it wouldn't work out. But when we checked into it, they were saying, well, we could possibly do it, we haven't done it before, you'd be the first one. We're to get, get, get a pick for everything, it seemed like. And, but it would take seven to 10 days to get them out there, they have to call in National Guard personnel and medical staff and bring them out. We don't have seven to 10 days to wait, so, given the situation. So, we elected to go ahead and since we had declared community spread, the staff pulled off some of the contact tracing, we're going to do it ourselves. So, we made a request, Chancey made the official request through KDM to get a thousand test kits and a thousand gowns and gloves and everything, we need to do that. We pulled all hands on deck from the county and we've got different departments under certain staff Saturday. And from 10 to 2 out in front of the armory, between the armory and Stroh Hall, we will be running a three-lane drive-through clinic where you can drive up, never leave your car and get tested for COVID. So, it's going to be a challenge to do a thousand people in, in four hours, but we'll do as many as we can and chances are, we won't stop until we're done, but we are wanting to test people that number one, live in Dickinson County or work in Dickinson County and have a connection here, if you don't live here, that are either symptomatic or have had contact with someone that is positive or symptomatic, been exposed. If you're doing fine, you haven't been exposed and you don't have any symptoms, this isn't your clinic. So, we want to preserve those test kits for people that have been exposed or, or have been, had symptoms of COVID. So, I would challenge, you know, encourage people to come out Saturday morning to the fairgrounds and we'll see what we do by getting them tested, so. We'll have somebody that'll take those test kits that afternoon and drive them right to the, they get to the lab so we can get them in the queue and get them tested immediately and get the results back. And then, our staff will make phone calls to everybody, notify them of the results.
And if someone works here but lives outside the county, they still could participate in that?
Yes, if they have a connection to Dickinson County, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we're going to go ahead and move along. The one resolution we have is in regards to the Sparks grant, and Brad, would you want to summarize that?
Yes, the Sparks money, the CARES money that we've received from the federal government, we, there's two categories for that, one's reimbursement, one is direct aid. As you're aware, you have made the distributions out to the school districts and the cities for the reimbursement, for the most part. We have been waiting to meet with the State Technical Advisor to get the OK on our direct aid, which is the litigation money we'll be spending. Janelle and I met with them on my video Tuesday and they were satisfied with all of our stuff, gave us the green light to move forward. So, you have, with the resolution, you've got several attachments that reflect the dollar amounts and the entities where this money is going and what is being used for. Also, in your package, you have got, I gave you a sheet here that says County Direct Aid Project. It just highlights those projects that we're doing as accounting with the partition and the, the addition of Stroh Hall, the ambulance, the ringtones scopes and another mess expounding, so. But that authorizes us to go ahead and move forward on those projects that can be done.
Okay. The resolution, and I'll make the motion, we adopt the resolution 092420, and this is the updated Corona virus relief fund distribution.
I'll second that motion.
We have the motion and the second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and this needs signature of the Commission. The next one is a belly dump truck. And Brad, if you kind of explained the need of that and what that involves and?
Yeah, so, under the heading of track loader, you've got a sheet in your packet that reflects the bids that we got on the belly dump trailer. We have two of those currently, and we have three semis, tractors, if you have it.
Yes.
Packages are a little thick today, so. Obviously, we're hauling a lot of gravel and we always have hauls a lot of gravel. And by utilizing a belly dump, we can haul exactly twice as much per trip using the same amount of fuel as sending a dump truck to the quarry. We've been hauling a lot of rock from the clay center quarry just because it's better quality rock and we can't get much from Kansas Falls or from Woodbine, so. This will, this will allow us to utilize the third semi tractor and to be able to haul the rock and do it and haul twice as much per trip, so it's much more efficient. Martin, we've got three bids, two of them come from Chuck Henry Sales in Solomon, the third was in Ranco Traders in Almar, Colorado. The one that he would like to purchase is the low bid conveniently for $29,950. That's a 40-foot pack meal belly dump trailer that's delivered here. It's about a six-day week wait on it from the time we order, so.
I got a question for you, I mean, you may not know, what's the difference, the second one there from Chuck Henry's got slope sheets, that?
That is sheeting, it covers the slope on the front and the back of it.
Oh, okay.
Just covers it as all and it has ladders and things on it that Martin says we don't need, so, it's just a, just another
Other words, it closes the back and the front of it?
It does, yeah.
Okay.
And he says that's just a place for material we get in and then it gets wet and rust and, and we don't need that, so. And that's just the second bid that they gave us, we didn't, that they gave us, we didn't specifically ask for it, but.
I'll make the motion, we accept the bid from Chuck Henry for the dump trailer with delivery for $29,950.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have the motion and the second, and thank you for the clarification too, it's a trailer, not a truck, I couldn't read my own writing here. So, we have that motion to have the one from Chuck Henry Sales, Solomon, Kansas, which is a little bid, $29,950. Any other discussion or question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. The third item is there is some updated investigative equipment that the Sheriff's Office has requested. And Brad, would you want to comment on that, but also the funding source for that equipment?
Yes, you have a request here back to purchase a piece of investigative equipment, which is essentially a contraband detection device by the Drug Task Force and the Sheriff's Department. This will allow them to, to be able to come and, they've called to manage delivery. It's located in Hidden Department's Quinceaño without tearing things apart. They have a paid bid on that and the funding for that would come from their asset forfeiture account, which currently has just shy of $200,000 in it, so. And asset forfeiture money that's been taken away from drug offenders, so. And awarded to the county through the court system, so. It doesn't really, it's a zero impact, neutral impact on the county funds, but it's good to see that money go for expenses like that, that's what it's for, so. And the request, I guess, was $41,200, is that right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid for the Vicon X-ray machine.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion, we have the second to accept that bid of the $41,200 for the Vicon detection machine. For two is a Nighthawk, so. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item we have, and the last item that we added on the Sheriff's Department regarding a vehicle purchase and just to authorize them to go ahead and proceed with that because they're in the process of negotiating that and just could do that with our authorization rather than wait till after the fact, so. And sometimes vehicles, you know, we can be looking at a vehicle and it can sell, so it's, it's good to let them move on it if, if they have something in the works. Brad, do you have additional information?
No, we just, we had two vehicles that they had damaged by a fender, I guess is what we used, our gentleman that was not necessarily in his right mind and damaged the vehicles, K Camp, our insurance company, had looked at those and declared them total. So, we did get a check from K Camp, or we will, in roughly the amount, less our, less our deductible, $15,000. So, again, this is kind of a budget ninkle item, insurance is paying for it and they just wanted this authority to try and get something from Home Automotive for that dollar amount to replace. They're only purchasing one vehicle, replacing two that were damaged, so.
Okay. I think the Sheriff had mentioned that one of the vehicles being replaced was one that had been seized on an asset forfeiture, so. Is there a motion?
What was the amount, I can't?
Not to exceed $16,000.
Okay, yeah, I'll make a motion not to exceed $16,000, give the Sheriff's Department authority to purchase that.
And I'll second that motion.
We have the motion and the second, that we do authorize the Sheriff's Department to go ahead and purchase a vehicle and negotiate that not to exceed $16,000. Any other question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I do not believe we have any other business or any other comments. Yes, sir, if you
Yeah.
Step up the podium and state your name, please, I'm sorry.
Justin Panzer, I just wanted to comment about the, the safer orders and just get clarification regarding the executive order that came down from the State of Kansas regarding masking, what's happened with the schools and things like that. So, if I missed the earlier part of the conversation, I apologize, I understood that this, this comment section was supposed to start at 11 o'clock, so.
No, but that's fine.
If you already commented, I'll, I'll back down, but.
I don't know, Brad, do you want to summarize that, just a little bit what that's?
Whatever.
Was there something more specific?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a couple comments, if I could, please.
Well, yes, why don't you go ahead and do that?
Yeah, yeah, okay, so I'm Justin Panzer, I live at 1663 Highway 15, just south of town here. For 16 and a half years, I was the pastor here at Faith Lutheran Church, right by the Auto Zone. And then, since August of last year, long story short, I'm now the District President of our Lutheran Church Missouri Senate Kansas District. So, in effect, I'm the Bishop of our LCMS churches in Kansas, which covers the entire state. So, a couple of comments, I've, I've read more executive orders, I know you guys have too, since, since they've been coming from the Governor's Office. And, you know, we all know that, that counties can be, you know, more restrictive, but not less restrictive than what the Governor has issued, and I get that. And so, you know, one, it's kind of, I guess, confusing that, you know, counties can go along with executive orders, but when the, you know, the masking order came out, then, you know, basically, you had every county in Kansas, you know, caveat that, opt out of that. And, and that was confusing because, you know, how can they do that when all along, it's said that they, that they can, okay? And obviously, they said that, you know, county commissioners are the ones who can make the vote on that. The reason I want to, I want to address you is, is, it's my understanding that Dickinson County has a safer law. And if you could explain that to me, so, so does Dickinson County have a safer law that goes more restrictive than what the State of Kansas Governor has issued? That, that's one clarification question I would ask you because I think that that, it's just not known in the county, okay? And so, I, I think there's just been a lack of communication between the, the county and the community and I think that's what's causing a lot of rub with what we're seeing right now. Because obviously, I work in Topeka, Topeka's technically my, my home office and Shawnee County and Johnson County obviously have been, you know, some of the most restrictive counties in Kansas. So, so is there a safer law in Dickinson County? I, I hear that there is, and, and if there is, could, could you help explain it a little bit? I think that would be, I think that would help the community out for one. And then, and then, I'll let you talk and then I'll ask a kind of a follow-up question, so.
I, what's a safer law?
Well, I, I mean, what I would comment is, is sometimes they'll have a state law and they'll try to have it uniformed so you do not have some of the confusion that in one county or one city, it's one law or the other.
Right.
And so, the Governor had given a directive regarding mask was, was And so the governor had given a directive regarding mask was, was one of the areas. And, and then with the legislature, when they were in session, gave kind of a directive that would be decided county by county.
Right.
And so then that's where you have a little bit of that situation. There's some counties, you know, each county has handled it differently. I know we're one of the few, we were not the only one, but we were one of,
One of the.
One of the ones that went ahead with the governor's order. And I think the idea on it was that that would be safer, not for just select groups, but, but all groups and all age groups. And so it is a little bit more restrictive, and I, and, you know, there's questions people have. Does a mask make that much difference?
Right.
And, you know, every, a lot of people have certain instances that they, you know, speak to. And I've had people say some masks are better than other masks and so on. So, you know, a lot of it is just trying to, you know, filter through the information and try to do it in a responsible way. I do know that some of the counties that chose not to opt into the directive of the governor later ended up retracting because, for example, the Manhattan City Commission and the Salina City Commission took stronger actions, and then you had some of the people that would go back and, or some of the commissions and, and have to kind of retrace their steps or retract that and go back to, you know, where we were to begin with. You know, personally, it was a three-zero vote by the commission on that. Or there was the agreement, I guess, but I'm not sure that we had an official vote, but anyway, there's an agreement of the three commissions on that. And, you know, so that's, that's kind of where we're at now. And, and, you know, personally, for me, it's a medical issue. And you have medical people giving information, and I know the medical community isn't a hundred percent in lockstep on it. But, you know, when you start hearing from doctors and people that are pulmonary type people, doctors and nurses, there are some areas in the state that are taking it more seriously than other areas of the state.
Yeah, without a doubt.
You know, and everyone kind of has their take on how that's going to work out.
So two, so two follow-up things if I can. One would be just in regards to our local schools. And my, my daughter was on the bus going to Concordia, you know, to the volleyball game. And obviously, the seventh and eighth grade volleyball, girls volleyball team has been, you know, on, on the quarantine list, okay? And so one question I have is, is, you know, they took all the steps necessary, you know, to make sure to, to get on that bus safely and, and travel safely, and, you know, and I think you know the deal, that, you know, they encourage the parents to go and take the kids home. That way, a limited time of exposure, you know, at least on the kids coming back. So, so why the quarantine on the bus for one? And then, you know, why immediately refer to the state epidemiologist and not what county orders were following? I think that's confusing a lot of people too, and upsetting a lot of people, to be frank. You know, the schools were doing the best job possible, and then it's just, you know, it's just like a final order, and there's no appeal process to it. So, so that, that's one. I don't know if you want to comment on that, or if there's, if there's any comment you want to give on that. That's just, I can tell you from my standpoint, that's upsetting a lot of people too.
Would you like me to comment on that?
I would. I would mention briefly, I, you know, I think as we work through all of this, sometimes things do fall under review. And I, I think parents would have liked to have heard something more direct.
Right.
And also had a chance to respond or
Right.
Offer a rebuttal or whatever. So, so that's been an area of concern.
Right. And actually, real quick, real quick, Brad, you know, I mean, so, so we heard we caught wind, you know, Friday, that, you know, that, that could be a possibility. So, you know, we're sitting on pins and needles, waiting for the phone call to come from somebody in the county saying, hey, your, your daughter's part of this group. And so Friday goes by, Saturday goes by, we think we're in the clear, then we get an email Sunday, oh, you're part of the group. You know, so I get it, you're stressed, I get it, you're strapped. But, but, you know, that, that wasn't good at all.
The, the situation with the busing, we had two buses. We had the middle school, we had another one, and that's been very frustrating.
Yep.
Not knowing how to handle that. You know, the situation with the volleyball bus is, you know, one of the coaches, I understand, was, had tested positive, and so.
Right.
You know, the, they, our, we're relying heavily on what the state's telling us, because this is, this is unknown. And we don't have a lot of the expertise to go with this. The state's relying on what the feds are telling them. That could be dangerous too. But, but there's calls being made to KDHT, to the ex, what we feel like are supposed to be experts on a daily basis. This is a situation where it was the first bus incident that they had, had been asked about. The girls called the state, talked to them, to the epidemiologist, and they said, that's a confined space. You need to quarantine the whole bus. It's not what we wanted to hear necessarily, but that's what they told us. We were, we, up to that point, we were going on the six-foot, ten-minute rule, which we've all been hammered into our heads for how, how long now. And in this case, they said that we had to quarantine the whole bus. We didn't have, you know, on Friday, we didn't have the contacts for that. We, you know, we don't know the forty-one kids that are on that bus and how to get over them in accounting. So we're trying to work with the school district, having some, some issues, trying to get that worked out. Finally, what they decided to do, and we knew it was going to be problems, was to use the messenger, I think, with, through the school system and notify those forty-one kids' parents. Because trying to reach out to them on a weekend and get contact information and stuff just wasn't going to work out. We didn't have it. And I knew, and I predicted, when we had our, our meetings on, on Saturday morning, I said, this isn't going to go over well. Because as a parent, I wouldn't want to get a message like that on Messenger or an email. I'd rather have a phone call. Because I want somebody to talk to, you know. But that's the best way to get the notification out. Maybe it'll result in them calling us and asking, so they did the best they could. To aggravate things even worse, then, when we called back to the state, it was sometime this week, and don't hold me to it, Tuesday, Wednesday, the, the girls and Dr. Holmes continued arguing with the state, because we, they weren't just satisfied that we should be quarantining the whole bus, because we knew the situation was going to come up again. After discussing with them numerous times, the state then waffled and reversed back to the six-foot, ten-minute rule on a bus. So the people that were quarantined now don't have to be quarantined unless you were in the first two rows behind, or either side of whoever was, was, was positive. And I don't know whether we even got that notice out.
That's, no, that's crazy.
So during our, during our phone call last night with, with the schools, we said, well, essentially, what's that means is now we can reach out to those kids if they have had no other contact, and they were not within six feet of, if, if one bus was a driver, the other was a coach. And I said, if they weren't within a couple rows of, of seats with, close to those people, then those kids can come out of quarantine, because they don't need to be. So that's been another very frustrating thing, is the rules are changing. And I know that the citizens think we're changing the rules, and we are, but we're changing it because of what we're being told. And, you know, Dr. Holmes on the radio yesterday made a comment that one of the professors at KU commented that he, he compared this to building a plane while we're flying on it, you know, or flying on a plane while we're building on it. We just don't have all the answers. And, but the CDC has changed a lot of things back and forth. We've seen KDHT change a lot of things back and forth as we go through this thing. And it, it makes the public think we don't have a clue what pill we're doing. And, and it's very frustrating. So that's, that's kind of where we're at, and I've got no better explanation than that.
I get that. And I think, I think that would take me back then too, than, than why shut down the school. So we've just gone from a whole bus of kids, forty-one, to the first two rows, which might be a max of six now. And now we've shut down our schools because, because of this for the foreseeable future.
Well, and it wasn't just the buses, why we shut down the schools.
Right, I know there's, I know there's other staff that, right, yeah.
That have tested positive, and from what I've been told from the superintendent in Abilene and Chapman both, they just can't get subs.
Right.
You know, it's a lack of subs to come in and fill those voids where you do have confirmed positives. And so that's one of the reasons schools got shut down.
Sure, sure.
You know, so.
Okay, last thing I'd like to say, I'd just like to, I'd like to speak as a pastor and a public figure. I, I was a public figure in town, and I'm even more of a public figure now, just with, with how my role has changed. And, and the reason I say this is, you just have to be careful with, with what you say, because we live in a digital world. And, and you guys know that. And so from, from the pastor side of it, we have a hundred and sixty congregations in Kansas, about two hundred plus pastors that include those who have retired. We have fourteen elementary schools. So, so I'm over two hundred plus pastors and, and two hundred plus elementary teachers with, with my new role in Kansas. And, and because of COVID, and this is not just Dickinson County, you know, the amount of horror stories that I have heard from pastors and teachers. My, one of my, my sister-in-laws is an ER nurse in Great Bend. The amount of broken jaws that have come into the ER, the amount of bruises, the mental health challenges that our pastors and teachers and just people are under right now is, 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 it's sad. It's very, very sad. To go along with that, obviously, when you're in a public position, you're in a position of trust. And so, you know, my kids were, were so happy to get into summer weightlifting this summer. You know, they gladly wore the mask to go lift weights, to play volleyball, to basketball. And two weeks into weight, you might recall, there, there could have been a confirmed hotspot from a kid who going off to college in Aggieville and, and brought it back to Abilene, right? And you would have thought the world shut down because it was on fire. And, and there was a pretty terse email sent out from Will Burton to the, to the entire, you know, messenger group. And so I got ahold of Kyle Becker, and I said, look, if we're going to talk like this to our community, you're going to turn people against you, no matter what. And, and so they did. They softened it, they apologized, I appreciated it. Later on in the summer, and I'll just be frank with you, it was, it was Dr. Holmes's girlfriend, her son, tested positive. And it was the biggest hush-hush thing in the world. But everybody and their dog knew who it was. But because they had the long, the, the wrong association or right association, or however you want to characterize it, this was not perceived well, okay? So, and then, and then Dr. Holmes said something on, on social media one time too. And, and I screenshotted this because I was so taken aback by what he did. This is from July second, and I can show this to you, but he posted on Facebook, on his page, "It took click it or ticket to get people to wear a seatbelt. I wonder if mask it or casket might work." Now, I'm not here to oppose masks. I don't like them personally. But when you're a public figure, you cannot do that. And this came kind of on the heels of, of the, of the basketball incident. And so what, what I'm here to tell you is, is, is the guy has lost the public trust of people, okay? And, and, and what do you do to, to, to shut him off of social media? What do you do to rein him in a little bit? I know he's frustrated, but he can't do this, because he's just inciting the community. He's inciting parents, and, and even if the state's coming down with, from the state, and, and information's changing daily, it's, it's not helping. It's not helping at all. And so I, I speak as a pastor on that. I speak, I speak as a parent on that, and, and you've just got to watch what you do. So, and you could, you could throw back at me, that's fine, so.
I don't take, I'm not on Facebook, but, but, you know, I think all of us hear some things, and there are people on Facebook, so I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
We adjourn.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second to adjourn. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We adjourn.